Meeting to order.
I've got to go, but that sounds good.
All right, get off the show. Just a housekeeping reminder that there's some extra wires on the floor, so be careful not to trip. Frankie, watch your knee, because we're right in the middle here and I just busted mine. This is a joint meeting of the Hocconie County Planning Commission and the Hocconie County Council. And I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Pearson at this point.
Okay. Our first item is corridor planning.
Excuse me. Can we use microphones? My thing is really not good.
Yeah. Oops. So much for that.
Okay. Is that any better? Our first item on the agenda is discussion regarding corridor planning. We're doing some work on it, but we also have Mr. John Cato. Here from Alta that is willing to give us a short presentation or short little speech on what Alta can do to help us get these corridors done. If you'd like to come up and... He's going to do that. Can we get this?
Please get him. This year is the whole.
No. Can we have that?
No.
No.
All right. He's got one. You just go hold it.
Awesome. Well, hello. Thank you. I'll just go ahead and talk about this corridor study that I've been talking with Adam and company about. What I thought I'd do is just kind of explain kind of what a corridor study is and showcase an example. This isn't a big elaborate production, just what... This is something we could provide with the resources we've been discussing to this point. So what we've understood that the emphasis would be on, this would possibly be for 123, with an emphasis on traffic and safety. And thinking about similar corridor studies we've done in the past, Alta Planning and Design. We did one recently up in Traveler's Rest. I do feel like I should give you just a small introduction about Alta and myself. My name's John Cato. I'm a civil engineer with Alta. Alta Planning and Design, we have a Greenville, South Carolina office. And we do planning all the way from implementation. The way I like to say it is, we like to do the planning, we like to do the pretty pictures, but we also love the smell of fresh asphalt. We like getting things done and getting things built. But this is something we did in Traveler's Rest, just to walk you through a corridor study we did for them that's similar kind of scale and scope of what I envisioned that we can do for y'all. Move around and see. Move over here. There we go. Okay. So this is an example of one we did in Traveler's Rest a while ago. Start with the background. Got a little... Apologize, got font issues, just transferring between computers. But we take into account all the master planning documents, any documents that are relevant to the corridor we're looking at. In this case, there was a bicycle master plan done for Traveler's Rest. And then we start looking at the study area. This study area in particular was for three roads, North Point Set, South Point Set, and Center. These were all DOT roads. So in the course of our suggestions, it was important to get DOT buy-in to what we were doing and take that design criteria into account. We didn't want to produce a corridor study or put forward recommendations for something that DOT would just absolutely say no to. So what we do is we go in, we take an assessment, we take stock of what's there, opportunities there. You can see just existing pictures here. Go in and see around. This is the project area we're talking about, just various, you know... Once you're driving and you can see the opportunities, you see the problems and the opportunities, overview of just kind of... These are, and the red circles are kind of intersections and conflict areas, areas that need a lot of attention, have a lot of traffic, conflicts, things like that, that we would seek to resolve in a corridor study. Key intersections, like you're seeing up there. We also try to seek out other features that might be an important part of this area. For instance, there's Gateway Park here in Traveler's Rest. That's an underutilized park. And as part of this corridor study, we were thinking, is there a way that we can dress this up, make these streets more inviting, so that this park, ironically named Gateway, that's hidden, is more of a feature for the city? Something that brings it out and draws in folks, gets them out of their car, gets them playing, gets them spending money in their town. Some pictures of Gateway Park, it's kind of hidden. That's actually Sun Rift back there, Sun Rift Adventures. You actually kind of have to access it through the back of their parking lot to even get in. Project goals, so kind of like I've been saying, just try to revitalize what's going on there, try to bring out the strengths of the corridors, things that are along there. And then what we did is we have a charrette. A charrette is kind of a fancy way just to say workshop. We had a three-day charrette, and this is where the public involvement piece comes in. We get property owners, all sorts of stakeholders involved, business owners. It's really important that they come in and weigh in on what we're doing, give their opinions. They're the ones, just the screenshot of folks we talked to, they're the ones that come and they drive the corridor, they drive these streets every day. They could say, listen, this is a problem here, this... Everybody makes a U-turn here, it's unsafe, people are trying to cross, you need to do something about that. And since, I mean, we're in Greenville, but we're not there every day, this is important stuff that we need to hear for our design recommendations. So then we, during the workshop, three-day charrette workshop, that also forces us within that three-day period to come up with some very good design elements. Everything that you're about to see is what came out of that three-day session. So it actually forces us to not take a long time. Within three days, we have, you know, beginning of understanding of the problem, all the way to design recommendations and graphics and something we can go forward, build a cost estimate from and start talking to DOT, city council, start the steps of implementation. So just walking you through some of the things we did here, there's the before of what you have existing, talking with folks and trying to work with some different access management for that Wells Fargo Bank and other residences. This is a way that we sought to make that intersection, that pinch point, safer and at the same time, make it more attractive. North Point Set, we take these road widths, we see what's available. A lot of times, we find there's excess capacity, there's just way too much pavement that we can do something with. And so we see if there's an opportunity, if we can incorporate larger sidewalks, if we can incorporate buffered bike lanes, shared use path, the trail system, something like that that fits. If it doesn't fit, we're not going to recommend it. If it's not safe, we're not going to recommend it. But if by all means the excess asphalt and capacity is there, then let's use what's there and do it. More graphics on some of these recommendations. Some are dependent on different things happening with different private properties. Some of it is counting on growth happening, and that's part of the study as well, of seeing what's happening, maybe what's not happening. Part of the charrette as well, trying to get the story of, hey, so-and-so is selling their business, so-and-so is definitely not going to sell their business, things like that. Parking is an issue, things like that. That's things we need to know about and that we incorporate into a corridor study. So, and we end up with some photo simulations. We take a picture like this of the existing road, and there we go. And then we try to, and then we say, this is what a full build-out could be. Again, a pretty picture, but at the same time, this is us swinging for the fences and saying, with what we've seen, with what is truly buildable, this is what we can do. And we kind of, we go through intersections and do this. This was a, this intersection in particular, this triangle right here, very difficult pinch point, tons of people doing like six-point turns in and out, trying to get around. And so our recommendation is to try to make it more of a T. There's a potential to make it kind of a gateway into Traveler's Rest, as opposed to just, you know, where in the world are we? Oh, there's Swamp Rabbit Trail, we're in Traveler's Rest now. This was more of a pronouncement of, you're in Traveler's Rest, this is a nice area. Same thing with South Point Set, take it and try to improve on it, maybe add parallel parking when the space is available for it. Photo simulation, here's street sidewalk, here's what we can think it could be. You could bump it out, we can get some greenery and shrubbery in there, we can expand that sidewalk, make it more pedestrian-friendly. If there's a bike head master plan, try to incorporate some of those elements as well into our recommendations. Same thing with Center Street. You see the shared use path over there, that's a 12-foot sidewalk meant to tie into the Swamp Rabbit Trail, so you don't just have a linear up-and-down trail, now you have something that's bringing people further into your city, into Gateway Park, into other areas that they may stop, see things, spend money, and enjoy the town. Photo simulation. Here. There we go. So you can see, there's the shared use path on the left and the bumpouts, more greenery, more welcoming, more inviting. There's Sun Rift, this is Center Street and Highway 276, North Main Street. Some recommendations there. If we worked with Sun Rift, we could alter that parking lot slightly, make it more of a welcoming entrance into that Gateway Park. Again, make it more of a feature and enhance the strength that the city already has, that underutilized park that's just sitting there. Gateway Park, some recommendations there, some different things they could do, splash pad, try to put in more intermodal courts, things like that. And all of this came out of our three-day charrette. Of course, we go back later, compile things, produce a formal report, or cleaned-up PowerPoint presentation and some poster items for later, for later on, for hyping it up or seeking funding or anything like that, presentation purposes. And then we have next steps, which, what do you, you know, it's great, we did this, we got the pretty picture, what do we do with the pretty picture? And we, you know, help work with the cities, counties, municipalities. If you really want to implement this, you've got to go and work, get county council or city council prioritization, seek your funding, and then hire engineering teams to finally implement. We also, as a part of it, it's not shown, that's the end of that part, we do provide cost estimates for everything, for the road improvements that you're seeing. So it's not, we're not just giving you a pretty picture, we're also giving you a realistic engineering cost. I'm a civil engineer, so when we do these cost estimates, we're looking at asphalt, we're looking at, okay, two-inch surface course, here's your aggregate base, you know, things like, we're really breaking things down. We use DOT pay items number to do it, and we'll turn that around so that you're not going to be hit, if you do decide to go forward something, you're not going to be hit with significant change orders for somebody saying, oh, this is a pretty picture. It's actually a lot more expensive to do that. What we do is we take all the costs into account and make sure you know about that going in. Just an example for Traveler's Rest and something that we'd be excited about doing for 123 here, if we're allowed to do so. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the thank you for the presentation. Uh... Just a question. Just a question.
Thank you for the presentation. Noticing that some of these things look sort of like some of the more urban areas around here. How did we get to this point where things aren't... I mean, is it just because we built it for a lot of car traffic, automobile traffic, or...
Yeah. Every case is different, so it's, but traditionally, what we've seen is, yeah, there's a lot of auto-centric development that's just happened over the last 30, 40, 50 years. And so now things are becoming a lot more bike-ped friendly. A lot of our work with towns, small rural towns all around the state and around the southeast, we're getting, we're all realizing that if we can get people to stop and get out of their cars, all of a sudden, they're shopping more, they're eating more, they're doing things. And so that's kind of shifted away from the auto-centric development into more bike-ped friendly style. And we don't mean to force that style, but it is, it is our reputation, it's what we're known for, so if it works, we'll suggest it. If it doesn't work, then we, we're not trying to force a square peg in a round hole. I mean, for, there are certain arterials and highways, we're not going to suggest a bike lane on the interstate or something that doesn't make sense. But yeah, we've just seen a shift from auto-centric development into something more multimodal and transportation-friendly for folks that don't have cars.
That was a comment, thank you. That was a comment I wanted to make, because our primary interest right now is the 123 corridor from 93 into Seneca. That is our commercial center. We're not going to have dog walkers on that road, and I think if you were to ride your bike, you'll be taking your life into your own hands. So safety would be key, not so much flowers and pretty trees.
Absolutely. Understood.
One of the reasons we wanted to bring this to council is that, two years ago, we were set on a directive of looking at gateways and looking at corridors within the county. And we were identifying lots of different corridors, and the reason why those were important from a planning standpoint, of how that's going to look in the future. Here recently, we've been redirected by county council to, let's not look to the future of these, let's deal with 123, which is pretty much getting away from us as it is. But while this committee has control of talking about what a small rural road looks like and how we might control it for the future, things like 123 are beyond our scope, and that's why this gentleman is able to show us what we really need, if that's what we are going to be directed to be looking at.
Can you speak a little bit on the ingress and egress on deceleration, acceleration lanes through there? It seems like if you go down 123, the amount of black marks that you have in there, especially on those left-turn areas, are the cause of the majority of instances that I see in there. And it's gone to the point, I don't know if y'all paid any attention, I've looked at some comprehensive plan that Clemson's doing with 93, where they're actually going to put concrete medians all the way down, but not all the way. I don't know where they're going to pick and choose. But 93 is looking like it's going to have concrete median all the way down to limit left turns. So as we move forward with that, that changes the traffic flow and how you get to and from. That's not my goal of 123, to have to go two miles out of the way and do a U-turn. I don't want 123 to become a U-turn.
Right.
When the average speed is probably 64 to 65 miles an hour, it's not 55 like it's posted. Can you speak a little bit on what we can do? There is lane offset there. What do you see that is a cost-effective way of doing this? Because the planning phase of it seems to be easy. The ability to pay for it is probably where everybody struggles with.
That's always, it's always difficult balance of people wanting to get to where they want to go, and at the same time, trying to showcase what makes something strong and get folks to slow down and stop. And if you're talking about people slowing down and stopping, people get upset about, you're causing more traffic, you're slowing things down. And then if you are letting things go too far, then people are moving too fast and you're creating unsafe conditions. So that's, that's part of the balance, it's part of what we have to do when we go in and look at these corridors and study what we can do. And 123 is a good case of both of those. And what can we do to keep people moving, to get where they want to go, but at the same time, enhance some of the strengths that are there? And, you know, but without forcing something that doesn't work, like you're saying, making people do, go out of the way and do U-turns, things like that. So, like I said, it was brought up, we're not, we're not coming in and going to propose bike lanes on a highway where people are doing 65 miles an hour. We want to do something that works, that fits, that's going to enhance the safety and at the same time, keep people moving. But there are traffic calming techniques out there, ball bouts, and I know some of those ball bouts, like shown there, that sometimes they don't take away a lane, they just narrow it a little bit, they get, they get cars come in, and you don't even realize it, it's just kind of something psychological that happens. You kind of slow down just a little bit, and that kind of helps calm things down for a certain area. You get past that area, and you can speed back up.
On, speaking a little bit on the bike lanes, I do think 123 is a prime area for biking, coming all the way from Georgia through Westminster, all the way into Clemson. I mean, you go, I've been a lot of places in the United States, and it's a 70 mile an hour speed limit, and they have a bike lane. I mean, yes, you're taking your own risk, but Swamp Rabbit Trail goes right beside 55 mile an hour lane all day long. You know, we take a risk every day we get in the car. So I don't want to state that we're not going to look at bike lanes, because I think we're missing the boat here, because it is a great place to ride to and from. And a lot of people are looking for a long stretch of road, and obviously, if the car runs off the road, you run that risk no matter what. But as we move forward, you know, 123 is a, you know, a to and from right now. We don't have a lot of, you know, stopping areas. There is a lot of businesses on there, and I believe there will continue to be additional areas in there. Biggest thing that I have is, is how do we make it so we're not stuck in 10 years from now or five years from now? And how do we make it safe? Maybe that's lowering the speed limit down to 45 is, I think, a big start, in that area especially.
And if I could touch on really quick, there are a lot of ways that we can still make corridors bike-friendly without necessarily putting in like a bike lane on-street, you know? To your point, we can do things, we can separate things out, we can have buffered bike lanes, where you have a lane of parallel parking and a bike lane adjacent to that. We can put, we could put a grass buffer and then have like an expanded sidewalk or shared use path, things like that that are separated and away, and we could have safety rail there so that you could still, you could still have a bike corridor, but it would be separate and away and safe from very fast traffic.
I think for that matter, Highway 11 has a bike lane all the way through it that I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the state paid to put that in. And it does get used, it needs to be cleaned.
It's not maintained, that's the problem there.
Right, and it's not cleaned and not brushed, so the majority of people that are biking in those areas are actually biking in the road because they've ground the bike lane and the bike lane's dirty. So that's another issue that you have over here, I agree with you on maintenance. If we're going to do this, we better maintain it, otherwise it's going to look back like the pictures.
Yep.
For the discussion, or anybody got any counsel, what they're... All right, let's go on to the topic of today, comprehensive plan.
Okay. Are we done with Mr. Keno, or would I have to stand up there?
He is actually going to give us a presentation on what they can offer us through their company with a comprehensive plan, to make it a good document.
All right, oh, great. Look, we're up and running. It's exciting. Hello again. My name is John Cato with Alta Planning and Design. I'm a civil engineer. I'm not a planner. We have some great planners that couldn't be with us tonight, and we work with some other great planners. But we put this presentation together, just some background on a comprehensive plan, what it can do, you know, this is our pitch, why we should have a comprehensive plan and update it, and how it would make Hocconie County better. For this effort, I'm with Alta Planning and Design. We've also been talking with Orion Planning and Methany Burns Planning about that. They're great planners, I'm going to show you some of the samples of the work at the end of this. We work with them all the time when we do comprehensive plans and comprehensive plan updates. They're the best in the southeast. So what is a, what is a comprehensive plan? It's a big, big-picture document. This is where you're going to define the goals, where you want to go. It's kind of a visioning process. It's not site-specific, it's not focused on something small. This is analyzing conditions and trends. What's the future, what are your strengths and weaknesses? What's the infrastructure you have right now? What's the topography? It takes all of that into account. Why do one? It's actually required by state law since 1994. It's, law requires that you have to review it every five years and update it every 10 years. And the idea is, this is, I think, required by the state so that municipalities, cities, and counties just can't whimsically decide to do something. There's, you've gone through an elaborate process, you've gone through a study, you've gotten public input, this is what you value and this is what you're spending your money on. Why do comprehensive planning? Like I've said before, big picture, provides community goals, guides and directs, and one of the most important things, access to funding, how you're going to achieve those things. And this also encourages public buy-in, which is crucial to the process. What are the benefits? You know, you have a roadmap, you can get to where you want to go, create an image of where you are now, where you want to go, challenges, how to tackle those challenges the right way, and provides policy reference for making good decisions about other items that come up. Like I said, where does it fit in? This is a long, this is a big-picture, long-range document. It is not something tiny and site-specific. I'm sure everybody's seen a comp plan, and it's almost like phone book-sized thick, filled with a lot of text and very difficult to get through. And what, we don't want to do that for you if we're fortunate enough to get the chance to do it. What we want to do is something more graphic-friendly, more visual, but at the same time, very informative and comprehensive. Get closer until it works. Oh, there we go. Okay, so a comp plan is made up of nine sections. These are the nine sections that make up a comp plan. This is required, they're required to have nine sections. And these are the ones: population, economic development, natural resources, cultural resources, community facilities, housing, land use, transportation, and priority investment. And you can imagine, if you're trying to cover all those things, why this becomes, ends up becoming such a big, thick, comprehensive document. Priority Investment Act, so just calling attention, the last change in the law, this happened in 2007, added that ninth one, priority investment to it. It also changed the language of the housing element and transportation element. The transportation verbiage that changed in there was that it has to include pedestrian and bicycle projects. Previously, that was not a requirement. And it added this ninth segment, the priority investment, because what they were seeing is these comprehensive plans out there that were fine, but just gathering dust. This priority investment adds a detail to it so that it's something that can be implemented and something that becomes real for these municipalities. So each of the elements, what they all have to cover, it's all about safety and, you know, health, safety, and welfare, pretty much the mission of all of them. And how is this community going to tackle it in such a way to enhance those, provide and enhance? So what are the steps? How do you, how do you go about doing a comprehensive plan? It consists of identifying all the, what's going on, all the stakeholders, collecting all the data, developing the plan, where you want to go, and then basically editing. So evaluate, you know, identify, collect, develop, edit. For this research, identifying, these are typical questions that are asked through the process. Who are we? What's our capacity for growth? Where are we going? What are our resources? And what, how do you, what are the nuts and bolts about answering these questions? Data gathering, projects, projections, comparing, comparing what you have now to what you The visioning part, this is where public input is critical. What does the community value? What do folks like? What do they dislike? What direction does the community want to go? This is, and we identify these stakeholders, we get their input, and make sure that's a part of the plan. Plan development, and when you're actually developing the plan, how do we actually, now we've got the vision, we've got where the community wants to go. We want this to be a safe, welcoming community. Okay, how do we make it safe? You know, what, where are we now, and how do we, how do we keep making it safe? How do we make it safer if that's a problem? We want more active transportation in the community. How do we do that? So the plan development gets in the nuts and bolts of how to actually achieve those goals. Implementation, this is where the part of the plan, develop the policies, develop budgets, capital improvement, this is how to make it real, go in from vision. budgets, capital improvement, this is, this is, uh, how to make it real, going from vision to recommendations to actually, actual implementation. So, and this, this is just a summary slide, but in summary, um, the state, state law enables the comprehensive plan, uh, must be reviewed and updated, reviewed every five years, updated every 10. And this is, this is your, um, this is your local governing body. This is your body of work of where you want to go, uh, what you want to do, how you want to get there. This helps influence zoning ordinances, landscape boardens, capital improvement plans. Um, this is your big picture that's going to influence, uh, how your county operates and how they pursue the goals that they want to chase. Just some examples, and like I said, we, we're seeking to do something graphic, uh, graphically friendly and easy to read, not a phone book thick of, uh, 10, 10 font type and, uh, just a wall of text. So this is example from, um, Belmont, North Carolina. Um, and you can see, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of text here, there's still a lot going on, but it's still, it's still friendly. It's still something you would pick up and want to read, um, even though it's still maybe thick. Um, this is still something that you would want to, um, actually pick up and, and work your way through. Um, it, it's going to be, it's still going to be a, a, a very, a very comprehensive document, a lot of, a lot to it, but at the same time, that doesn't mean it, it can't be, uh, user-friendly and readable. This is again from, um, Belton, looking at different transportation, uh, parts of, of what's going on in their plan. This is from, um, a comprehensive plan and done in Oxford, Mississippi. And I show this because this is kind of the wall of text, but there's still, it's still friendly, there's still a lot to it, but there's still graphic, uh, elements to it. It's still something, there's, there's, it, it is information you need to take in, but it's still presented in such a way that makes you actually want to take it in and, and read it. Um, this is, uh, more from the Oxford example and, uh, last one from the Oxford example. Um, so that's it. I just, I wanted to walk through the process of, of what it is, why it's important, and show you some examples of what we hope, uh, we can help produce for Oconee County.
Could you speak, could you, could you speak briefly on, um, how you were able to, uh, reach out into the communities, um, how you're able to get community involvement and input? Uh, because that's the real objective, obviously, when we do this.
Yeah, we, we work, um, with the planning department of the municipality, organize a series of workshops, um, and make sure, the important part is that those are advertised the right way so you do get turnout. You can't, you can't have these, some of these workshops and have zero, uh, people from the community come and, and expect that you have a comprehensive plan that addresses the community's needs. So it's important for us to, to work with the community, make sure that, uh, we're, we're having these, these meetings, these workshops, and that they're at an agreeable time of day. You can't do it at two o'clock in the afternoon, everybody's working. So, um, a lot of times these happen between five o'clock and seven o'clock. Give a window when people can come. They just get off work, they could come and provide feedback, or they, hey, just got off work, go get dinnered, and then, you know, it's open to seven, so you still got a chance to do that. So it's critical, and, and when we do this, that we set up these, um, public engagement sessions at, at a good time, that we do get good community feedback.
Would you be able to provide us any stats as to the success rate that you have compared to us just calling a meeting?
Yeah, well, uh, difficult, difficult to give like black and white stats. Um, I just, I know that we have, like I said, like that previous example, just, just certain strategies. We, we work and work with the planning staff to be sure, like, hey, has this been advertised, you know, appropriately? Did you, you know, a lot of times the cities or counties will post it on their websites, who knows about it? Um, there's, we've, we've worked in communities where, um, you know, we've, we've done projects specifically for like a certain neighborhood and it's difficult to get that neighborhood turn, to, to come. So, um, hey, have you advertised this, uh, in churches? Have you advertised this in grocery stores? We try to think of places that, um, other, you know, typical, uh, government entity might not have thought of, like what, what's going on in the community? Where, where is it going to get, where do we need to post this so the word gets out so we do get this feedback that we need?
What's the, the timeframe on completing a plan like that? Is it six months, a year?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah, I would say between, between eight and 10 months.
And you could, Alta can produce a document that the general public can pick up and look at and, and read without having to have, uh, two years of college?
Yeah, uh, it, we can produce a readable document for sure. I, I do want to caution, I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's still going to be thick, it's still going to be comprehensive, it's still going to have a lot to it, um, I think just by its nature. It's going to touch on everything. Well, we've talked about, um, though, to try to give something concise, and what we've done in the past is providing an executive summary. And so then you kind of have, you know, 20 to 40 pages of, of kind of the heart of what you, what the whole planning effort was, what you're really trying to chase, so that, yeah, you're not picking up war and peace and, and expecting the public to go through that, so. But it's, it's available if, if, if anybody wants, but, um, the executive summary option has been popular for just a, a really good concise summary of, of what a comprehensive plan is, that you're trying to achieve.
I would appreciate it if you could come back to staff with any additional information of the success of the buy-in from the community.
Okay.
At large. Obviously, it's the community at large that has to really, that's the meat of this document.
Mm-hmm.
And yes, if we can get them to turn out, that's a terrific thing, and we've probably accomplished 90% of the goal at that point. But once the document turns around and is created by you all, we would want to know that it's a document that the community actually buys into and says, as opposed to saying, well, I didn't say that, that's not, not what I wanted, um, as a community. So if, if you could come back with any examples of, you know, we've had raving reviews, or we've had this success, or this was such a positive thing that we had, the next five years, they ask us to come back and do an update, that kind of, if that could be brought back.
Sure. I will, uh, I will track that down and make sure that, that gets sent to you.
Does council have any questions?
I, I think the main reason we're here tonight is, you know, we, we have two tasks in front of us that we've been charged with. Um, one is corridors, kind of going back to corridors a little bit, and we have to do a proper head to plan review this year. The, the 123 corridor is above our pay grade. We need outside help. We, you know, compiled some numbers and we're, you know, in order to resolve 123, we, we have to have some professionals. Um, and, and I brought up the example in Pla- Planning Commission, it's not so much Seneca going towards Clemson, it's Clemson coming towards Seneca. And no matter what we do on 123, we're, we're choked down to a four-lane bridge. And I don't think that bridge is going to get any wider in the next 10 years. So part of this is bringing in an expert to, you know, do we have a bypass, or do we come up with alternative routes? How do we improve traffic on 123? When we're not really controlling the growth. The growth is being pushed towards us, not us towards them. And that's where we need to help and ultimately the funds for a professional organization to come in and do this. So that's basically, we're stuck on corridors. So if we can sit here for another 18 months to two years and do nothing, or we need to, is this a priority? If it's a priority, we need to fund it. Second thing is comprehensive plan. We've done, uh, Mr. Chapman's done some in-house estimates with over, staff overtime, maybe hire some extra staff to get that comprehensive plan, or do we hire an outside outfit that does it all day long? And again, you know, there's probably not a big spread in the funds. I guess to me, since 20, uh, 20 is a review year, that those funds should be filled into the budget automatically, you know, because that's common, it's going to cost extra money. So that's the reason we're here, is one, we're stuck on corridors, we need help, and two, do we try and do the con, the con plan in-house with overtime? Do we know it's going to cost money, or do we hire an outside firm to come in and, and help us, you know, you know, jointly do it, um, and put it together that way, so.
I got a question. What's been done in the past?
And how's that done?
Yeah, we, we have a two, we have a 240-page con plan that nobody can read.
But who did it? Was it done in-house or was it done by somebody else?
I wasn't here for that.
Okay, anybody know the answer to that?
Mr. McGowan, was that done in-house?
Paul, you're shaking your head.
The, the previous full rewrite was done in-house with staff. At the time, we had, I believe, three or four planners. We're now cut down to basically one. Uh, we do have a second one, but he's a shared planner with Westminster and Wahala. Uh, we did use external, I think, uh, they had planners from the COG that came down and assisted with the actual public meetings, um, since those were held at night. So we think it was a kind of a quasi internal, external, uh, assistance. Um, and then the last review, which is done in-house because it's just statistical updates and we can do that in-house. But I think it was a combination thereof, the last full rewrite.
Uh, Mr. Kato? Are you going to start from scratch, or are we actually just going to update the one we have or modify the one we have?
It's a full rewrite, they'll start from scratch.
Okay, so they're starting from scratch.
The last one we did was the statistical update. This is the full rewrite review, so you'll start from scratch, community meetings and everything again.
The biggest thing that we've been deliberating over a, as Planning Commission is, we, we're looking at a document, this is the basis of what we do. Um, we don't manage the budgets, things like that. Our job is to plan for the future. And we don't plan because we sit there and say, oh, I would like to do this, or I would like to paint that green. We plan based on what the county, the residents of the county have told us they wanted. That's this document right here. The hard part about, for our job is, is that we look at this document and we're eight years in, and one of the things that was talked about 10 years ago was, we need bicycle, uh, paths. Talked about that Clemson was going to be moving over the lake and that we need to start working on these things. That was 10 years ago that, that we had foresight to do that, yet we've done nothing about it. Um, you look at some of these other things and it says that we want to adopt regulations to ensure the cultural and natural resources receive the protections necessary. You look here, goal number three, encourage development in a way that protects and preserves our natural resources. For a while, we had been, as a planning commission, working on something we called rustic elegance. Again, based on what the community, the residents of this county wanted, and we've been put as, oh, well, that's really not important. So what we're stuck with is going, we can do this in-house, stick it on a shelf, and accomplish the state minimums that's required. However, if we are going to man up and handle the responsibilities of the position, which is what the county residents have asked us for in the past, there's a lot of stuff that hasn't been done in this last one. My personal thought is, is that if we work to facilitate those meetings, we don't have great turnout at, at what we do. If we hired a professional firm to do it, it would be our hope that that turnout would be created in a better manner so that we could truly get great feedback. The second thing is, is that if we sit and work to facilitate those meetings ourselves, we're all going to bring, whether it's you all do facilitating the meeting or us facilitating those meetings in those areas, we're all going to bring personal biases with us of, well, this is what's important to me, let me hear you speak over here, or let me hear you speak over there. And I don't know that we're going to get a true picture of what the community wants. And so having an outside firm, they don't bring that bias. They can come in, uh, identify the stakeholders, the who benefits, how and why, um, they can identify those problems. And while we think we can do a lot of those things, we're still, we haven't done them in the past and we still struggle trying to keep our own personal out of what the community wants.
You, you bring out a very interesting point. How many times do we pay? I mean, if we did that in-house, it still costs us money, it still costs us time. And if we're willing to do this and move forward with it, we also have to be willing to implement it. Maybe not a hu- all of it, but some of it. And I think that's kind of where, where I sit and say, okay, if, whatever this costs, whether it's a hundred thousand or something like that, the cost to implement this, what are we willing to set aside to implement what we're paying for? Because there, I've seen books after books that are put on the shelves, and we all know several of them, that we're just now getting to 15, 10, 15 years down the road. And so to me, um, you know, I, I, I will be glad to commit to correct the issue rather than have the issue, um, uncorrected, and that's what's going to occur. We're just going to allow it to plan itself out. Um, you know, I think the design, um, rustic elegance and the things you're talking about are important, and they are important to our citizens, and I hear that over and over again, um, of making sure that our area stays, um, nice and beautiful moving forward. So I mean, that's my commitment, if we commit to something like this, we need to commit to actually implement and fund it. Um, just planning it is not going to get us anywhere.
I'd like to make a comment.
Some of these that you're complaining about, that you, you've seen the future and it didn't happen, if you look on here, these community facilities, and they want to know about sewer, water lines, and all this type of stuff, we're doing that now. In this, uh, there's another one on here about, uh, the transportation. We got the cat buses that we didn't have back then, and, uh, we, the economic part of this thing, we got, uh, this, uh, over here at Route 11, the commercial, uh, industrial site was graded this year. We got more businesses coming into it. And there's just a lot of this stuff that you're saying, and not only that, you, that mentions education in here. We got Tri-County Tech coming down there. So a lot of these things that you predicted 10 years ago were happening today.
Absolutely. And without a plan, they probably wouldn't have happened.
What about that, uh, penicillin?
What's that?
Penicillin.
They were probably researching something when they came up with it.
Yeah, they was trying to figure out a way to clean their nose with a QSTI up and they come up with penicillin.
Some of the stuff that we talk about now doesn't happen in this county for several years down the road, whether it's, I mean, how long have they been working on 85? My whole life, I'm 37, I've never seen, and there's always construction going. Anytime you go into Greenville, anytime you go into Clemson, there's always construction. So I think the, you know, as, as a plan moves forward, you're always sooner or later going to get to something. My issue is, is if, if we're so bent on something, we're going to spend money on it, we got to figure out a way to implement the program. That's the money, that's the real money. Don't want out, you know, money for a book or something like that, or investors, as I've seen in some of the other plans, that some of them gave $10,000 for it. Some of those plans just got implemented last year. So, I mean, as we move forward, I think the whole idea here is to not let it be 10 years down the road and all different people sitting around this table going, well, that council, this is what they said, and we're just now doing it, just like what you're saying. I mean, there's got to be a forward thinking, but there also has to be a plan, otherwise nobody here or on this side needs to be here.
The big question is, do we, as a county, want to have, we have to have this comprehensive plan? Do we want to sit back and let, let it be done like it's always been done and nobody can read it? Nobody understands it? I've had to read it three times and I still don't understand the whole book. Uh, we need to, we need to set our priorities. We need to quit being reactive and be a little bit proactive in the county. We've been reactive long enough now. This book will help us, give us a guideline to what we as, as county officials and the public want to see. It's, it'll be all in this book. We can go by and say, well, we want to do, say we want to, whatever it is we want to do, we can look in the book and see how the public reacted to that, what they want to do. We're here to serve the public and not serve ourselves. So this book is a guideline of what the public wants, what they see the need for, what they want to look at in 10 to 15, 20 years down the line. Do we want to have a, a, a book that looks like this, that hardly no one can read? Or do we want one that we can pick up and actually flip through it and try to figure out what the public is wanting to do? I don't think it's a, that much of a problem to me. Yeah, we're going to have to spend a little money, but, you know, my grandfather always told me, you have to spend money to make money. And if we're not willing to put out a little bit of money to get... And if we're not willing to put out a little bit of money to get the tools that we need to make this county the way we would like to see it, and the way that the public would like to see it, then there's no use for any of us being here. I mean, you know, what we're asking, what the planning commission is asking for, or will be, uh, yeah, it's a nice little sum of money. But, in, when we get through, we'll have a document that we can read that will help the planning commission, will help council, will help all of the committees that we have here in government do their job better, because we can open it up and say, "Well, the county, the people wanted this. This is where we need to go. We, we don't need to do something else." I just think it's, it shouldn't be that much of a problem to get it done right. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right and get it done in six months to maybe a year, instead of having it linger on and it be twenty-twenty-two. And we still don't have a comprehensive plan, sort of like the review went on a eight-year battle, try to get it fixed. So, that, that's my point tonight.
And no offense to Alta or anything like that.
Michael, please. Sorry.
No offense to Alta or anything. Have y'all looked at other firms as well, to give you different ideas moving forward? And I've, I've seen a lot of plans that y'all do, y'all do a phenomenal job. Not, it's no, no, no way on that. But, just thinking through, if we go this avenue, I have no issue with going a professional route and everything through there. But also, if we go the route of funding this, we need some kind of designated funding to implement it. Not, "Oh, we'll just find the money when we find it." There's gotta be a way, if we're gonna do this, y'all are gonna spend the time, and we're gonna pay taxpayers' money to do it, we need to agree to implement something, whatever it is, whatever that cost is, moving forward.
We don't have a choice, we have to do this plan. We have to do it in-house.
There's not a choice of, "If we're gonna do this plan, we have to do this plan." It's, "Do we do it in-house, or do we hire it out?" Is what we need y'all's input on. Do you want us to do it, or do we want somebody else to do it? Because it's a state requirement, we gotta do it. So, we just gotta decide where we're gonna do the money.
Yeah, I understand. I know, I know it's a state requirement. I mean, that's why, I mean, to me, I'm saying that you need professional help. I know my wife tells me that all the time. But, I think, I think in this case, if we're gonna move forward, that's where I'm headed with that. I think we, we don't have the staff to do a plan like this, but again, we have to implement it, not just waste it.
And, we're gonna have to bid it out, like we do everything else, don't we?
No, ma'am, actually, I was gonna try and answer his first question. Alta has already been pre-selected as part of our on-call. Uh, if you remember, we go through and select all those groups of engineers. We bid them all out at one time, and we do those five-year agreements. Alta actually won the planning and consulting section of that, that bid process. So, uh, we would not have to bid it out individually, we did it as a big group, so.
I'd rather we just started doing this, you know, a couple of years ago, instead of just now talking about it. But, I'm, I'm fully in favor of working with a professional organization. We only got, you know, essentially one full-time planner working for the county, and we don't wanna burn him out or run him off. I think Mr. Chapman's doing a great job. So, if he can work, build some institutional knowledge and provide that to, to the professional groups, then that's gonna be a much more sustainable solution going down the road, rather than just producing a, you know, killing some trees to build a document just to comply with state requirements. We, we really owe it to the future of this county to come up with a plan. I, I think that's one of the key functions of council, if not the key function, is to establish a plan and begin to implement it. So, I'm fully in support of hiring folks who do this for a living, and, and Alta's obviously very well qualified, being that they've already gone through a vetting process, being on-call, was that every five years? Yeah, so, I, I'm fully in support of both the corridor plan and the comprehensive plan, and, and getting started as soon as possible, because every day we wait, it, it, the problem's just gonna get worse. So, thank you.
Y'all have an estimate on that? Is there an estimate put together?
Mr. Adams?
Eighty-nine thousand, I believe is what, what Alta said to do the management plan process.
Just not, comprehensive plan eighty-nine, what's corridor?
The number that I've seen batted around a lot, I think it's twenty-five thousand for the corridor study. And what, the example with traveler's rest, that was a very similar number.
Mark that not from a zero. That eighty-nine thousand isn't coming from zero. That eighty-nine thousand is being compared to what it would cost to do it in-house, and we're still kicking around preliminary numbers, but could be upwards of fifty thousand to do what has to be done, just doing it in-house. And when we say in-house, in-house isn't paying staff. In-house is, is sending out cards, sending out letters, getting a website that can, can get community involvement, putting ads in the paper to get community involvement, these different things, uh, to make those things happen. So, we're not comparing eighty-nine to zero, we're comparing eighty-nine to what it would cost us to do it otherwise.
I think we also have to look at, you know, we're not just creating a, a pretty book, and a lighter book, and an easier-to-read book, but it's the ability to get an accurate representation of what the county feels we need, and what the people of the county feel we need. So, that's what's gonna be hard, and I think Mr. Johnson stated that pretty clearly earlier. But, that is the absolute most important part, and if we aren't able to do that in-house, we have to be able to do that by seeking somebody that can.
Is anybody bothered to contact the highway department and ask this to be put on their corridor study and presented to us at no cost? 'Cause we're paying two cents a gallon more for gas since, uh, last July, and they have a corridor committee that does this? Has anybody contacted them?
We have, we have got information from DOT about traffic studies and, and things like that, to try to help us do it, but I didn't, I was not aware that they had a corridor team that actually implemented corridors. I didn't know they would do that for us.
I think the planning you said was what you're driving on right now. Every day, every road you drive on, that was the plan.
And, we have seen stats from DOT that have been provided by staff that show the way, that this road has this much impact, this road has this many wrecks. We've seen where some of the impacted roads are. From there, we need an engineer to tell us, "Well, what does that mean?" Right until by now, that going up, uh, going up the east side of the lake towards Kiwi Key, you've got a tremendous amount of traffic cutting off that food line, based on the studies that we're seeing, that are cutting through food line to get up north. And as Kiwi Springs becomes more densely populated, as the reserve becomes more densely populated, that food line corridor is gonna be cutting from Clemson on up, providing weight there. Have we done anything with that? That's an area of where, okay, we need to do something with that. What do we do? We need an engineer to kinda help us with that part of it.
Actually, uh, the Appalachian Council of Government has eyed that corridor for improvement. They've got a five-year plan already in place to handle that section. They, thank you. They picked, uh, several, um, projects in Oconee, Andersons, Spartanburg, um, and the, the food line intersection is one of those projects. So, that's actually already the schedule.
Why haven't we been told?
They're proving the intersection.
Why haven't we been told that?
Well, I handed out to my colleagues here, the entire sheet of what the COG proposed for the next five-year plan, so, sorry it didn't trickle down, but I did hand it out.
In doing that plan, do they come up and suggest traffic lights, or stop signs, or the width of the road, or curbing and things like that? So, they do the whole engineered process? Excellent. So, that road is potentially taken care of?
They're just doing the intersection here. One-twenty-three and Oak Clemson Highway, Davis Creek Road.
That intersection.
They're not, they're not.
So, they're not actually doing the road, then?
They're redoing the intersection.
Okay, the interse- okay. So, the intersection isn't, the road is, the entire road from point A to point B is the part that's being so impacted. Yes, heavy on that intersection as well. It would be the hope, though, that, that the engineers could come up and identify some of those other areas, and say the best way to solve that. It may be that it's diverting traffic off. We look at area like down towards the pier, and down off Shiloh Road there, that's going to carry some sort of weight and some sort of impact as Seneca does grow into the future, that heavy population growth there is going to be coming up, and they're going to be using that corridor off Shiloh. Do I know that? Only because of the pictures that I've seen. But, but, an engineer is the one who's gonna need to tell us, I would think. "Yeah, I see it here, but in ten years, it's gonna look like this, unless you start making these changes to the road itself, not just that inters- one intersection or whatever."
I'd like to comment on a couple of things I hear. I told Ed I'd be quiet, I lied. I've been, all the thing I've been hearing about, I'm in industrial, I do industrial consulting, problem-solving. I asked the planning commission last time we had a meeting, I said, "Guys, we gotta get together and have a plan, you know where the water lines are, the size of the sewer lines, where this is going." We gotta, just had a guy bought six million dollars' worth of property, comes to us, "I want y'all to pay for everything. If you don't do it, I'm gonna go to Clemson." Shouldn't the planning commission, shouldn't you go to the planning commission, y'all say, "Look here, ain't nothing there. He pay you six million dollars, it's up to you, it's gonna be private." I hear, only thing I've heard tonight was, like Melanie said in that song, "I ride my bike, I roller skate, don't drive no car." I was having bicycles. What about our students? We, we've spent a lot on education. Approximately sixty-one percent of our tax dollars go to education. What are our kid, what are the, y'all's kids, not mine, gonna do when they get out of school? We, we, we creating an excellent product with our education system, Dr. Thorson, and we're, we're exporting our product elsewhere. We oughta be planning for what we're gonna do with our kids, or we just gonna send them off somewhere? Hell, mine's a corporate pilot, he's in Charleston. Okay, but, we need to look at this. We need to look at, what are we gonna do about where people are gonna live? Are we just gonna gear towards strictly tourism? And that's what this looks like. And I was taking some notes here on his, on his thing. He proposed, Ponset Highway proposed, we gonna cut it down, as shown in your, in your thing. Well, a car is six foot wide. Car parks over here are six foot wide. The average car door is four foot. You open the door, boom, you're in the traffic. Trucks are eight foot six now, not counting the mirrors. That leaves on eleven foot, two and a half feet of clearance. So, if the trucks come within each other at the same time, they gonna knock the mirrors off each other. This is some of the things we need to look at.
Those are absolutely things we need to look at, and I, and just to clarify for council, 'cause I've heard council talk about sidewalks, and flowers, and, and walking dogs, and knocking mirrors off. This is a sample from another city. This isn't what's being proposed for here. This is just what he's capable of doing.
When you're asking what kids are gonna do when they grow up, that's, I, I've got four, so, that's a very valid question. But, part of that is, is quality of life. And I think when you look at some of these, it's not about, um, you know, creating industry, it's about creating quality of life, and a lot of times, industry follow that. So, you also have to make sure that you're taking care of the citizens and the environment that they live in, and create the environment that the people want to live in, which then again, goes back to the comprehensive plan. So, we need to make sure that we're working for what people see as their community, and that will help us understand that, so that we can better do the corridor.
And, Mr. McCall, we get to direct him in the direction that we think he should go, not only us, but the community, as far as we want more industry, we, we don't want back paths, or, we get to have that input in the plan. So, we can direct the plan in the direction that we want it to go, not to, he didn't just say, "This is where you need to go." The public's input and our input, you know, we get to direct the plan in the direction that we think, you know, industry, or our education, improving our education, improving our sewer, we get to tell, tell them that's what we want you to focus on, right?
I mean, he's not gonna just do it by himself. We have control over what he does and how he does it. To get the plan that we want, it's not his plan, it's our plan. And that means every council person, Mulder, you know, Mr. Blackwell, our citizens, they will all have an input in this document, to where we get the document that we need, that we want, not what Alta or any other designing company will give us. We don't want their stuff, we want what is good for Oconee County, and what we need here.
And we, our plan is to go out to each district, at least, maybe several places in the district, and get the input from those citizens. We don't want just one little group of people that make the most noise, being the ones that plans this. We want input from the everyday person that lives in this, every community in this county.
Mr. McCall, you made a good point about, talking about trucks and everything, and I think that's kind of when there's been certain situations that have came up where we remove the curb, or we widen the curb. Those things like that need to come into effect, and that's part of, being part of the plan as we move forward. So, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna have parallel parking down One-twenty-three, that'd be pretty interesting. It'd be pretty exciting. But, as, as we move forward, part of those things come in there, that is a heavily traffic road with large trucks on there. And, and that, to me, as we start identifying goals, one of your top goals, no curves. I don't want a curb when I'm turning. The worst thing you see is a brand-new, beautiful area, and the curbs is tore all the heck, because they didn't have Wayne out here telling where to put a curb, or not put a curb. But, I, I do agree with you, what you're talking about, as we move forward, and that is important on this road, um, and it is accessible to trucks, because there's gonna be plenty of trucks going down.
Okay, our main goal on these two items.
Shot caller, the shot caller.
Our main goal tonight is to try to get direction, what direction council is going for as finance. If they see that the county can, uh, come up with funds to do these documents like they're supposed to be done, like they need to be done, or is this something that y'all want staff, or Adam, I guess we'd say, to tackle on himself? Plus, you're gonna end up paying two-thirds. I, I'm, I'm just guesstimating. It's, it's not, it's only about a third cheaper than having professionals do it, the time you pay all the overtime, pay all the postage, and have all the meetings and, and everything. To me, it's a no-brainer. But, we would like to get some kind of direction on, where do we go from here? Our next meeting that we have, should we continue our, uh, work on doing this comp plan ourselves, or should we wait until council can, um, or Mr. Mulder can find the money to do these two items, to help out that way? Should we just sort of put those, not necessarily on the back burner, but just sort of let them go for a meeting or two, that y'all can come up with it? Or, or, that's what we need, is that type of direction tonight, if possible.
I have a question for, would the corridor plan be part of the comprehensive plan?
They would be separate efforts. But, but, to, to your point, we're not gonna do one without weaving the data from one into the other. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, we, we won't do the corridor study and take that knowledge and not incorporate it into the comp plan, or, or vice versa.
Mine is trivial. You know, you, you'd said y'all were gonna furnish, uh, snacks and all, what, what is those snacks gonna consist of?
I'm with you.
Do you have professional engineering piece set aside? Where's, is the money gonna come from? Uh, one of my biggest One of my biggest reservations here is that y'all knew about this long ago, but you never approached during the budget time, you know, to request that some money be set aside.
Did council not know this for the last 10 years as well?
Well, you know, there's a lot of things, our budget document is also 82 pages long, so, no. There's lots of detail in there that we, that's easy for us to overlook, but this is your bailiwick, so you could've.
They actually are asking as part of the budget time, we're getting ready to approve a new budget that starts July 1. I think that getting to this timeframe is exactly what they needed to do as we go through work in the budget process.
So that's gonna be part of the next budget, but not the current?
Not the current. The current's almost over.
Okay, well then, check that comment.
Yeah, July 1's coming up.
Okay, I thought you wanted it now, which means part of the current.
They could go ahead and get started and then the expenditures would come after July 1 for the most part. So we'd have those monies budgeted in the July 1 budget, which will be here in just a couple of months. So, I mean, I think that they're actually asking at the right time for us to put money in next year's budget to get started, in my opinion.
The reason we were bringing it now is because if we are gonna have to do it in, if he's gonna do it in-house with our help, it's gonna take a whole lot longer and we've got to start right now. If somebody else is gonna do it, we can wait till the budget, new budget. But we just need to know as planning commission, where we need to go from here? Do we need to focus every bit of our time on this because it has to be done in a year and a half? Or can we focus our attention somewhere else because an outside firm's gonna take care of it for us? So we, we need direction on where y'all want us to go.
You got my direction.
Are we expecting to vote?
No, not vote, we, we just want an opinion.
I think probably the best way, Madam Chair, if we could, is just to have it as an action item on the next, on the April 10 agenda for y'all to discuss further. You've gathered the information now and then you can say, all right, do it yourselves, or we'll include it into the budget document to be considered at that point in time. So that way, the planning commission has an idea of how to spend their time for the next couple of months.
I'll just put it in the budget document, you guys can vote yes or no when the budget comes around. Make it that easy.
And these two are two separate issues.
Yes, sir.
Designated microphones.
Okay, does that answer everyone's questions on these items? Okay, our next one is discussion regarding traditional neighborhood development. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
This should be, Mr. Paul, your baby here, traditional neighborhood?
Well. Yeah, so the, in view of the fact that what, what the market, what, what people moving to the area are saying that they like to see, and based on the fact that a lot of people are moving to developments like we see over at Patrick Square. I was talking to a developer and I said, why don't y'all start building some of these in, in Oconee County? And he said, well, we can't because the code won't allow us to. And I said, well, why don't you just submit plans and maybe we could pass an ordinance to do it at that time? He said, you're not gonna get a developer to commit the resources for a project that's purely speculative if we don't even know if it'll be approved. So, he said, what you gotta do is create a new district for, for this, I guess zoning classification, or whatever it would be, new type of development district so that we can build what the, what the market wants. And so that's why I brought this up. I don't know, it's probably been a few months now, but that's the, that's where it began and then I think we kicked it to y'all and said, all right, can y'all figure out, give us some recommendations on, on what the, what this district would consist of? And then y'all asked for more direction. We'd since, myself and some staff had met with the developer and he is willing, ready, willing and able to assist and bring along some other people, give us some ideas, you know, a, a road engineer. And that's one of the things that came up was the roads are a big problem, our code with regard to setbacks and sidewalks, what can be built in the right-of-way? That is a big road.
What's that, width?
Width, road width, that's a big roadblock to getting this done.
So y'all are wanting a new zoning classification, a new zoning district to put in the matrix?
Could I ask why we need to have a zoning district that's got substandard roads that school buses can never drive on? It's got substandard offsets, everything's, I mean, there's a reason we've got these sizes. There's a reason we demand these roadways. You talking about something that's substandard that can never be incorporated into the county road system, the school bus can never drive on it?
I don't know that that's the issue. I think the roads are still the same width, it's just a matter of how close things can be built to the road or in the right-of-way.
What I've seen has substandard right-of-ways and substandard road widths. And private roads?
You're talking about like Patrick Square?
A school can never, a school bus can't go on private roads and...
No, I think these would still be county roads. And I'm not the best person to talk about this. I, I was given a problem by someone who said they would build this or would consider building this if we had the, the code in place to allow for it to be built.
Why would they want to build it with substandard roads? They could build it with standard roads that pass county regulations.
I don't think the roads themselves are substandard, it's just that we've established our code to restrict how close a, a house can be built to it, how, whether or not a, a street light can be built within the right-of-way, whether utilities can be put in the right-of-way, how close sidewalks can be, all that stuff. So it's, I don't think the roads, the quality of the roads themselves are any less than the rest of the, you know, county things. I, I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a codes expert nor my planner, but I, I was just told we can't do it by a developer, so.
Can I ask, Adam, can you give us some of the ideas that you have on this subject? You can use this mic here.
So, the first overall question that, when it was originally brought from Mr. Kane to planning commission, to planning commission to planning economic development and back to planning commission, was the commercial or non-commercial. Currently, our plan development district is only, is residential with a small commercial element. This developer wants to do a residential only in this traditional neighborhood development. So Patrick Square is constantly kicked around. If you thought of Patrick Square without the commercial element, that's what we're looking for. You know, Mayberry without the corner store kind of thing. So it would definitely speak to right-of-way, smaller right-of-ways, streetscapes, street trees, build two lines, green space, things of that nature. But we also, when I spoke to the developer, we could get together with developers to get community input, not just textbook planning input for this development. It wouldn't just be based upon what the planners think would be, once again, somewhat like the comprehensive plan, it'd be what developers and builders could live with and deal with. And I had some other thoughts regarding it being a zoning district versus some other items, so if we could look at it in a more broad approach instead of just a zoning district, that may free up some, gives us a little wiggle room to allow it to be created.
What happens when the developer leaves? And you've got private roads who's gonna maintain?
They're not, the, the goal of most of this, in all honesty, they have to be built to county standards for us to take them and the developer would, in these cases, won't the county to take them, otherwise, exactly what you're talking about. So if you're looking at, at that, they have to be, for them to actually get their fire code and ISO and all that stuff, the fire truck has to turn around just like a school bus does. So most of these intersections and everything like that all meet code. What, what I've seen the biggest issue is, is these front porches of these new ones are built on the sidewalk. There's literally five feet from the sidewalk to the front porch. This is not anything that exists here now. And again, the only reason this, this changes it is so realistically, you can get more tracks of home in, in one place. You have larger green spaces in there, you have less, less maintenance and, you know, these places are full of kids. So the school bus is gonna be there all day long, as well as some of these are equipped with senior centers, so senior buses are coming through there as well. And several of them that I've seen not here also have public transportation as part of them as well. So all of those roads are gonna meet the needs and meet the standards, otherwise, we don't take them.
If they're, if they don't meet the county rules about right-of-way, they can never become county roads, the school bus can never go on those roads.
That's not correct. If, the, the, the right-of-way is an existent inside the neighborhood, the right-of-way coming onto the road is completely separate of that. This is talking about interior issues, not right-of-ways inside the area.
So the kids all have to walk out to the highway instead of the bus going to the community, is what you're saying?
Okay, can I, I'm gonna stop the conversation right there. This is something we can discuss in planning commission, this is not where we need to discuss it at this time. So we need to get with Adam and he can get our, the developer in here and other people that we need to discuss with to come up with this plan and then we can present it to council. That's, that's what we needed to, really need to hear, which way we need to go with it. So, you got anything? Does anyone else have anything to say? If not, I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Kammick, because I think they've got plans after this meeting, so.
We'll adjourn this meeting and start with the next one. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we need a motion to recess, to go to executive session. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, you need to state the purpose.
Yeah, except I don't have the little agenda from me.
Yeah, that's why I don't...
So we need to recess to executive session for the purpose to receive legal advice related to an economic development matter known as Project Omega, including the discussion of and the receipt of legal advice in relation to interactions between principals involved with that enterprise and Oconee County officials. Now, any discussion on this?
Madam Chairwoman, I have to order.
I'm sorry.
Mr. McCall has, has not been sitting at these and has refused himself, so he just made a motion and is sitting here for votes. I'm just curious as to what happened. That's, anytime Project Omega has come up, he's, he has walked out and left the room and he got a state ethics commission thing that, that said he was supposed to refuse himself. So I'm just asking the question, why he's making the motion and sitting in on this vote?
Because the reason I gave for the executive session, due to interactions between principals involved with that enterprise and Oconee County officials, he's one of those officials in question. Okay?
Does it require him to recuse himself if he's one of the people involved? I'm just asking.
I'll let the attorney handle your question.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The option to recuse or not is, is a decision of Mr. McCall purely, it's not a, it's not a decision of...
Tap it.
Can I not just talk really loud? Hello?
It's gonna look bad, Eric.
The decision is just from McCall's whether or not to recuse himself, it's not my decision, not the chair's or not the council's decision. He has previously recused himself as to the economic development matter, purely those discussions on Project Omega. If he wants to do that again, as those issues come up during executive session, he can leave the executive session at that time. There's a part of this discussion, a part of the executive session that purely relates to discussions between principals of Project Omega and public officials, and if he wants to be a part of that, he can. If he wants to recuse himself from that, he can also do that. So that's the decision that lies with himself, not with the chair.
Are we ready? All in favor?
All right.
All right. No pause?
Aye.
Well, it stands.